Glenwood, Arkansas, City Council Meeting, July ninth, twenty twenty-four.
We'll get our. All right, let's go ahead and open the water here. Happy Father, thank you for the day you've given us, and thank you for the opportunity you've given us to come out and serve you today. Help us to do city business in a way that will be pleasing you and bless this town and all the people that work in it, these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Praise your nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, and in thy fold, with dignity and justice.
All right, roll call.
Here. Here.
I guess I can make the move. We're waiting on Alan. Right now I have three people with some kind of resume here, I'm not sure what they are, but we'll open them and look at them when he gets here. The recorder treasurer position we're filling, are gonna try to fill tonight, will go till the end of the year. And then that person will have to file and run along with Alan's position is up for this year and Jimmy's position is up to be run this year. The city council position you'll fill will fill out the remainder of the two and a half, it'll be two and a half years on that term. So, in the two and a half years, the other two councilmen and the mayor will run for reelection. But in this one, you'll be replacing quarter treasurer that'll run for six months or till the end of the year. And then they can, you can run again if you're appointed to any one of these positions. You can run again, they can stop you from running again. So, that's kind of where we are. Okay, I'm gonna open these up.
Can I make a comment first?
Yes, ma'am.
This is my comment there. My name is Rhonda Elzar, and I want to say that this is no reflection on anyone who may have submitted a resume or an application, because I totally understand the commitment of service that you're gonna endure for your, the duration of your appointment. But I do want to bring this up. The advertisement for resumes by the City of Glenwood for the positions of treasurer, quarter, and council position for North District Two on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, with a deadline of July twelfth, twenty twenty-four, was abruptly changed to July ninth, twenty twenty-four. The notice of this change was posted on the City of Glenwood Facebook page on the same day as the new deadline, today, July ninth, twenty twenty-four. What if someone intended on submitting a resume for these positions and thought that they had until the twelfth to do so? What if the potential candidate knew he or she had until the twelfth for submitting a resume and is on vacation and hasn't seen the new deadline of today? I can see extending a deadline but shorting, what's the reason? I'm no attorney, but I question the legality of changing the date of the opening of sealed resumes or positions to a state sooner than advertised. Thank you. Elzar, E.L.E.A.Z. E.L.E.A.Z.A.R. Elzar.
The purpose of this, reason for changing, this was a night the council could meet this month. And we polled the council and this is one day, the night they could meet.
My apologies for being late after a deep quest.
What is wishes of the board for the council?
Me, I say that we stick with the revision on deadline, we're probably having problems.
Yeah, just push off.
But, I mean, when is our next, how many days do we have until that time?
I think, I think we need to open what we have right now, too.
Right, right. But I just don't know that we need, we don't need to make anything totally permanent until that deadline, until the.
Yeah, because we said at the last meeting we would do it our next meeting.
Yeah, y'all said next meeting.
We said our next meeting had to be.
I mean, I understand we changed it.
Well, you didn't set a meeting, but that's the thing.
We didn't set a meeting, it's always done.
I just don't want to get one of them deals where you have to redo something three, four times if I get it last time. Well, but I mean, are we not gonna run it? Are we having issues on?
No, there's a still position that has been pointed by the council.
So, there's no regulations on how long we got to advertise or anything?
The point is that you had it advertised, and if there's someone who wants to submit a resume, you know, you kind of didn't give them a notice that you were shortening the date of the timeframe, so that's all I'm questioning, that's all. And you're right, you're right, it doesn't need to. Or you could have a special meeting.
This is a night I can get the council here this month. You gotta deal with when I can get a council here.
I mean, you want it done right, so there's nothing that, that you vote on in between that kind of could come back and bite you.
A person would like to get it, get it, when is, when is the quickest, we could do it and please both sides believe.
Y'all send the twelfth is what he was gonna do. That's the way Brenda wrote it up and not by, Brenda didn't put that date in there for any particular reason, it just, we figured we'd be meeting after that.
Okay, could we take, could we take action that didn't, that wasn't permanent, that, that wasn't official until the twelfth? Take initiative of action, and then if someone wants to step forward, the council, we consider we can do that, could we? Because it's hard to get a court together right now, we need another person. I say we go that route, we move to our recommendation.
If anybody else comes forward, then that's a.
Yes, then we'll reconsider, or we will.
You don't need to really appoint nobody, if you're gonna leave it open.
If we're gonna wait, most of the way to the next meeting is good, I'll just be down here.
When are you gonna be working that again?
I think that's hard to tell. I'm gonna pick a little girl, I'll try.
I know. You're not gonna be here anymore this month, are you?
Probably at the end.
I do know the city needs the vacancy filled, because right now we, I won't name the different scenarios, but right now we're sitting here with a mental on court. And this, this might be.
No, for this, you got to have you three here. Because a mayor is not supposed to vote on these two positions. So, you got to have a night you three can be here. It doesn't matter about me, y'all have meetings without me being here. But you, I can't vote on this.
Well, I mean, it doesn't say we have to set it, it says it not, we've set it, but no, it's.
When we, when we set the deadline?
The twelfth.
Friday?
Well, I say, I say we do, if there's any, we open these tonight. If there's anybody, you know, in there we need to hear from, or if they're here, we can do that, and then if nothing else has turned in by the twelfth, we can call a special meeting Friday evening and make a decision. That's the deadline. So, if they're not in by then, they didn't want to be on.
I mean, I just give you the quick example of.
That would be the quickest way to get in there.
Right now we're sitting here with a bar forum, so you get the car ready, somebody gets in some, we don't have a treasurer, you know, we're kind of hanging. We're running on a thin line here, doing the best we can. It's obviously a volunteer and unpaid position, and it's time consuming, so I'm.
That's my, that's my motion, I make that.
You said Friday.
Call a special meeting Friday evening.
Maybe today, I think maybe by the children.
We go ahead and open what we have, we need to address them now, because if they're staying right here.
No, that's Thursday.
Are you good Friday?
Just wait until Friday, Alan?
You good Friday? We can just get together and make our decision then, before if they're staying, put your open one.
I feel like if you're gonna do it Friday, you're gonna open it Friday.
Yeah, just open it all Friday.
That's.
Y'all can make it. Y'all can make it?
I can, that's my life and possible, so that's why I had to schedule it.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know what to say, but I can do my best, that's all I know.
It's either do it tonight or do it Friday.
I. I, uh.
You need to do it.
I would like to say us. Do something enter the night, so we can get a court together and then. And then revisit Friday, three weeks, will you revisit it Friday? If that votes ain't there for, if they're not there for it.
I just say why, period.
So, I put a motion on the floor, give me a motion. What's your motion?
Address the Friday.
Got a motion on the floor to address the Friday. Have a second?
Y'all can make it.
Huh?
Can you make it?
They're great.
We almost lived, I almost lived a hospital for two weeks, my brother, and then we got my wife's grandpa died, and then my other family's gone, and I already did. Hey, you know what? We're just people, we do the best we can, so I second your motion, let's go.
Got a motion to second, roll call.
Jimmy?
Here.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
All right. Minutes for June twenty, twenty-four.
I make a motion to approve it and present it.
I'll second it.
Got a motion to second and approve, June twenty, twentieth, meetings as presented, do you have a second? Chris, second, and roll call.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
I make a motion, we take one, three, till the next, till Friday.
Three, 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 eight.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yes.
You have a second?
I'll say.
Roll call.
Jimmy?
Yes, ma'am.
Chris?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
That's three, two, six.
Eight, three, three, eight.
May twenty, twenty-four financials, it's your table last one.
I'm the billman, I'll do it.
Yeah, I was good with it.
I make the motion to approve it.
Make financials.
I'll say.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Okay, you tabled the SCBA's. I talked to Karen Barlow, and the FEMA grant that we've been turned down on for the last two years or three years that he's been applying for lease is coming open in October. And Karen says almost every grant they're funding is for personnel for people equipment, which is what they would be. I would like you to table that, I'm not trying to run, not get the equipment from the fire department, but I'd like you to table that and see if we can get it on the FEMA grant this year. We can't, we might do something, but this is third year of fly bars. But Karen says they've been putting that kind of equipment more on the funding priority, and since we got reclassified on our LMI income, that that kind of makes them look at us a little different, too, so.
What do you think?
The LMI classification is out, we got, the whole town, we don't even have to do anything, we dropped below the sixty-seven. And we dropped their, our income, Glenwood dropped way on down, so, the government, the whole city. She said that should have you settled on that, too, so, I would like, if y'all, if y'all want to borrow the money on that, go ahead and make a motion, but I would like for you to apply for that grant and see if you can get it as a grant, not to borrow the money. And he may get turned down, if he gets turned down again, I'd figure out what to do, because he's got to have the SCBA's.
I made a motion that we apply for the grant because we can pay it back.
How long will we know when we apply for the grant?
They haven't even gave you the opening date, but it's usually in the September first of October.
When's the next exception?
I don't think we're doing, we're not doing big in space.
We just had it, we just had it.
I mean, it's hard to fire it, it's okay, probably got their bottle, or SCBA's are all out of date, and SCBA's are, some of them's not gonna be resertifiable, or some of them's got two years left on them, some don't have yet.
We got a two-year period, so that's when we're looking at it now.
Yeah, well, you're really gonna be short on bottles before then.
We still got a few months left.
Some of, yeah, we don't, but some of the bottles are gonna go out before that, you know, there's. We got, we're fixing to be on a critical problem, we're not today on a critical problem with them, they have to use them, they've got equipment to use. Your bottles aren't matching up, you get some bottles, go some SCBA, you gotta watch what trip to get them off of. And if you get them changed around like it's going to do all of them, doesn't matter what truck you get a bottle or SCBA, you'll be able to have there, yeah.
And if it comes down to it, and we get some war on that deadline, we'll buy bottles, seven main, and then take up the packs, like, I'm good with the bottles, then it's part of it.
Chris, your second, I'm sorry, that discussion, four seconds.
I'll say.
Roll call.
Alan?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Was Jenkins in the board seat at this, or did he event?
Right here, maybe one, is that it?
That is Jenkins. I'm looking at him. All right, on Jenkins, your labor this month, or what he worked on this month for us. The metal for the two clarifiers, he's welding and sharing the metal, and that's your labor on that, on the two clarifiers working on. Y'all approved the one clarifier, but he got the metal for two because, both of them because it was so much cheaper to buy, about ten percent cheaper to buy his metal at one time. And he wanted to stamp it all out, because there was thousands of boats in that curtain wall, and he needed those all stamped a lot, so he's got those stamped and working on them. The four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's on the pump we had to put in at Hilltop. You remember, we bought the pump for fifteen thousand, and this about rotating assembly from the brand that was in there was eighteen thousand. He put a new strainer in there with the pump this time that we didn't have the last time, to catch the rocks, and that's what's going on at that. So, that was all the fittings, except the pump, all the stainless steel. No, this is the one that we worked in New York. And then on the Sunday call out right there, the two Sundays ago, when we were out, had a water leak at, up on Hot Towards Hopper, lost electricity, we also had a transducer out, and he put, that's the transducer, and putting that in. And then the eleven hundred dollars is working on the solid airway stations, and had some patrol board issues. So, if y'all approve that, I would appreciate it.
We actually tend, we actually verbally approved all this already anyway.
Yes.
I make a motion.
I say.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
The two HOC bills that are there in front of you, that put this, we have some of the equipment on maintenance, some of it not on maintenance, and I have them split it up, it took them four months to get this split up. But this was something that was in the budget, I just wanted y'all to be aware of that, if you look at those. All of the HOC equipment at the water plant and at the sewer plant is on maintenance contract now. They did the maintenance, they come fix it, it broke down, they did, they come and do PMs on it with this, so it gets all that equipment back. We were paying for that, not get part of it and not getting it serviced, it's all back on service contract, you're all getting it serviced.
Did it change anything?
Uh, well, it went up a little, because we put all the equipment on it, but no, I mean, and we took some equipment off, we were paying maintenance on, but it wasn't on.
It's up to date.
This is up to date. So, for those out in the room, the maintenance on the equipment at the, is this sewer? Wastewater, wastewater is eleven thousand dollars a year, and the maintenance on everything at the water plant. On this is the equipment that tests your chlorine, your pH, your DO. It's all the testing equipment and all the automated testing equipment that tests the two plants. The water plant is seventy-nine hundred dollars a year, and then here's much equipment in it, there's water. Those are in the budget, but it wasn't hardly that much, but it was there, it was rather than anything that bothered them, I'm just showing you, we finally got that straight. We've been talking on that for a year and a half, and it's finally straightened out. Unless y'all want to bother, it's in the budget.
No, and this, this is, this, refresh my mind. We, we had a whole bunch of equipment initially, when you first came on, that was not, basically non-functional. And we're paying twelve thousand a year for nothing, so we managed to get, raise that deal and get something that's actually working.
This is all the operating equipment that we have or will need in that type of reading equipment. Now, TJ has still got to put the, in it, we've already paid for that, he's got to put the telemetry, the control equipment back in, it's a sewer plant to get it automated. He has not got that in yet, we had so much other stuff going on, but the equipment's in, paid for.
I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate that.
That is, that is all back in and operating.
That freeze that we had back four, three years ago now, roughly, if we would have had some of this stuff working, it would have helped us if it would have been set up like we're trying to set up now, which is, correct?
That's correct. All right.
Uh, Billy, in fact, the day that I was with you at the water plant, you weren't even the mayor or anything, we were showing full tanks, and our pumps not running, and we had empty tanks, is that correct?
This, this equipment will not, doesn't check that. This is the.
Right, but I'm saying.
Yeah, that's correct, but, but this, this is the equipment that checks your, all your chlorine, chemical, DO. While the, I miss it, sir, like Chris, it does a lot, you check a lot more stuff, DO.
You check your DO, you check your chlorine, you check your pH, checking your oxygen, your O D, turbidity.
And then the, and then there's pieces of equipment that does the test, that's, that's even in the maintenance, but it has to be maintained.
My point is, we'll know we got prob, we'll know we got problems in different areas.
Well, the big problem with that is ADQ come down the other day, and just like our, our testing equipment from HOC, they said they were using it, hadn't been tested in four years, so that is left out, I mean, it was giving you a number, but what number was it giving you? You got to have that stuff, but all that's fixed now, and it's all on maintenance, so. You gotta have all that stuff up, ADQ, you can get away with it for a while, but when they find you, you will get it straightened out. All right, Glenwood General Fund, if y'all look at the, this interest sheet on our CDs, I should have, all of you should have had one on the back of your list. Everybody see that? The sanitation CD down there, the interest was, what, one and a half percent last month? Chris and I went to the bank, and they didn't renew the note, they just changed the interest for us. If we didn't redo that, there's no penalty, and if we leave it into the term, it's four point five, one percent interest they raised it to. But we didn't have to, if we redid the CD, we'd have to do a penalty, we could have got five percent, but it wasn't, it wasn't payoff, and they just changed the interest without redoing the CD on that. And its maturity date's still the same. That's the CD that we didn't catch that rolled over, and when it rolled over, it rolled over for three years like it was in there, and it just rolled over. And we let it go too long, but they, they did adjust the interest on it, at four point five one. Okay, then the other CDs you got to come up tonight, I gave you blank sheets of paper, I don't open them. Here's your CD, what the banks are offering for CDs you got to come up. So, if y'all mark them down, somebody mark them down, I gave you a lot of, little sheets of paper, you mark the interest rate, and I'll tell you what everybody's gonna say. We got two CDs coming up. Okay, um, y'all don't need me to, we don't need you, thank you, Johnny. The CD, or, uh. Is this, which is the, on first date, excuse me, first date. Six months, five, two, five, twelve months, five, ten, eighteen months, four, seven, five. On the twenty-seven thousand dollar CD you got coming up. And on the thirty-four thousand dollar CD, same, five, two, five, five, ten, four, seven, five, that's with first date bank. Five, two, five, or six months, five, ten for twelve months, four, seven, five for eighteen months.
That's first date?
That's first two.
Would you repeat it a little more time?
Yes, sir, six months, it's satellite going backwards, the interest rate's dropping the longer you leave it in there, so you're all right with that, right? Six months, five, two, five, twelve months, five, ten, eighteen months, four, seven, five. All right.
Which bank was that, Billy?
That, yes, first date. Diamond Bank, on the twenty-seven thousand dollar, let's see if they're gonna be the same. No, they're different, so you're gonna have to write these down different. Uh, the six month on the twenty-seven thousand dollar one is five, one, six, for AYP a five, two, eight, they did not say AYP over there, but. Uh, twelve months, five, one, oh, three, for APY a five, one, five, eighteen months, four, five, six, for an AYP a four, six, six. That's on the twenty-seven thousand dollar. On the thirty-four thousand dollar one, uh, from same bank, from Diamond Bank, five, one, six, and two, one, two, two, eight. Twelve months is five, oh, three, for an AYP a five, one, five, eighteen months is four, five, six, for, those are the same, I'm sorry. They're all the same, yeah, four, five, six, uh, four, six, six, AYP. Okay? All right, uh. I think that is. This one? Uh, that's Farmer, excuse me, put Farmer on there. And then put you on the inside, that's Farmer. Farmers, six months, farmers, both are the same, five percent on six months, four, eight, five on twelve months. And those are both, both long, well, thirty-four, 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 thirty-three, these, that doesn't. There's, no, twenty-seven down here is the same, guys. And Southern Bank Corp, twelve months, four, two, five, twenty-four months, three, eight, five, thirty-six months, three, three, oh.
Any motion?
You're gonna have, if y'all are ready to give me one, then we're gonna go. You got those marked, I didn't mark them.
I might have motion to do the first date, four point seven, five, eighteen on both of them. If I need to do it individually, I can.
Do you all want to combine?
Generally, I was wondering.
Are those same, are both on, on the same account? You can't combine general water and sewer.
No, but you can combine water and sewer if you want to.
There's two water and sewer in one.
Okay. Okay, okay. Just be clear. From Diamond Bank, when you were just informing us on that, or are we?
No, that was first. That's the last one I gave you.
State changed it for us. Didn't, didn't have to redo it or nothing. We talked about this earlier.
Correct. So this was done.
We were getting one, four, five percent on that.
That's done. They, they raised that to a four, five, one.
Okay, so that one's done. So all the ones at hand are these two right here?
There's, you said there's three?
Well, I'm only saying.
There's a water and sewer.
Water has two separate ones, but now we can't combine them.
Yes.
There's one that says water and sewer and then there's one that says general fund. Obviously, we couldn't combine them two.
No, you can't combine them. There's two water and sewer.
Oh, okay. I got you. I got you.
And then there's one, and then.
There's two water and sewer.
Yeah, they're the same, though. No, it's all possible. Same. One baby. Look around. Here, here.
Yeah, I got you. Okay, okay. So we got three. Do we need to, do I need to make a motion independently on each one?
Whatever you announce, you will.
The best deal I've heard of is four point seven, five, eighteen months. Because... There's only a three-month penalty if we decide to do something different anyway. And interest rates, you know, who knows what they're gonna do, but obviously they're betting on bringing it down.
Now, those are due, uh, eight, seven. They're maturing at first date, eight, seven, the two water ones. And, uh, then the other one, which is general fund, is seven, twenty-three, twenty, maturing. So we wouldn't.
We're getting these out a little early so we can, so we don't, so we don't go over.
But it is, it is an election year, Ann. The best deal I heard from a financial perspective, I don't know if you mean, obviously, but it's a four point seven, five, eighteen.
Yeah, you thought that, that first date was?
Four point seven, five, eighteen.
Yeah, I thought that. Already had five, two, five, six months, five, ten, twelve months, four, seven, five. But they were the highest, first dates are highest all across the board.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion so she can pull up.
Yeah, but I need to make three independent motions or one? Motion for the third, how do you do?
Do the one on the general fund first.
Do the one general fund.
I make a motion on the general. On the general fund in amount of twenty-seven thousand, oh, thirty-four, sixty-seven, that we put it at first date at four point seven, five for eighteen months.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Alice?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The other two could be, if y'all want those combined into one CD, I think that'd be a welcome thing. You can leave them if you want. They're both in the same account. The other two are both in the same account.
I say combine. Do we need to make a motion?
Do we need to make a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll say.
I'll say.
To which account, please, first date?
Uh, we're gonna combine them right now and the motion is to combine them. I third that or whatever.
Motion second. Go call.
Jimmy?
Yes, ma'am.
Chris?
Yes.
Alice? Yes.
So now we only have to make one motion.
Yes. I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
To do first date at four, seven, four, seven, five, eighteen months.
I'll, I'll say it to either both boards or whatever.
Okay. Jimmy?
Yes, ma'am.
Ellen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
The thing, my, my thinking on that is that one thing's affecting that it's going down, the other one's affecting that it's going down in eighteen months. I mean, what's the scenario? I mean, it's pretty much a penalty if we decide that if something doesn't work, so. It's affecting me good.
Sixteen, seventeen, you go out and load it, start it, hold it. I have them. But all that, all that is saying is on the water and the sewer project that we both got funded. Natural resource on both the water and sewer has extended. You know, we had to have it in by July one if it's gonna get to one point seven, five percent interest rate. Which you can't get paperwork through. You can't get approved for funding and have a job ready to bid in thirty days. That's what they gave you. You can't actually, from June the first to November the thirty-first. I don't think we'll hit the deadline on either one of those. Cause they still gotta, we don't have, on the water and sewer project. They've got all the specs on the filter. They've got all the specs on the building. They're coming to get elevation work on the, uh, some elevation shots they missed. I don't know what they missed. They're coming to get those tomorrow. I think it could be possible, the water project. Other than they're saying you gotta have your lawyer and your bond work filed by July the first. They sent this letter out yes, yesterday. So you couldn't even, you couldn't meet that deadline, but the bond work is no problem on either one of the jobs. We've already got the funding approved. It's just a matter of the lawyer coming down, reading the ordinances and, and writing it. In the thirty, forty-five days, you gotta publish it in a paper, but we'd already, y'all had already voted on the projects and the money's already set and the way to fund it mechanism's already set. We already know how that's going. It's possible you could get the water project in under this deadline and, and Andy and him said, we're gonna try. Depends on how quick all the paperwork comes back. The new filter system, they've got the drawings and all that on it. The guys come down and measured the building, got that on it. Now, the one thing that was in question on that, I just, I'll make y'all aware of this. The cost of the building, the new filter system will be solid stainless. So rather than putting the stainless steel, uh, building, stainless steel filter in a concrete manhole, basically, cause that's what it's gonna do is build a vault. They want to just set the building, dig it out, put your backfiller, gravel or some kind of fill against the, uh, against the filter. It'll actually be against your, uh, clearwell, cause that's what would be below, they'd have to get down the grade to match the other clearwell. And then the building would just have, the metal building would come up and build the top of the filters. And that's supposed to save you at least a third of the cost of the building. Unless y'all are in objection to that. They're trying to make sure we stay in the money with the way costs is going up. And there should not be a problem with stainless steel being in the dirt. It's stainless steel and it should last. They're using the higher grade stainless on it. It should be there for a hundred years. If y'all wanna actually dig a, a vault and hole and put it in and build that filter in there, that's, that is the other option. But the gentleman doing the design on the building and, and the gentleman doing the design work on the filter slash clearwell. Cause you're gonna have a filter sitting on top of clearwell. This will be the first one of these in the United States done. This way, because the filter system's new. He's got filters in working, but he hadn't put a filter and a clearwell together. But everybody says it'll be fine to do it that way. And that's the way they're designing for bid right now. That project may go home. They've hired a surveyor to come look at all, shoot the grades on the manhole. We can't proceed with the sewer project till they shoot. Every, a surveyor's gotta come out and shoot the elevation on every manhole, no matter what it says on the plan right now. You gotta start from scratch. Even though they just replaced a manhole in sewer line, they gotta come. And he's supposed to have been here last month to start doing that. Then you gotta totally redesign all that manhole and all that piping. And they, they said there's any way they're gonna meet that deadline for that. They can't, cause you gotta get that through the health department, through ADQ. And have it out for bids for, what, forty-five days? I don't know what these bids, basically go out in time and bid them until they open a bid. Contract ain't gonna be ready to, you gotta have first draw on this money by the, by November thirty-first. You ain't gonna make it that long. So, uh, the water project, we hope we can get done under that, but the loan is still gonna be good. But we don't know what interest rate is gonna be there. And that's, that's the thing that we don't know to tell the taxpayers, cause all this work was done with the bond. That, they told us what the interest rate was and now the state's saying, hey, we didn't wait to get started on time, but, so we're not gonna hold interest rate either. But nobody in the state has done the first draw on that five hundred million dollar worth of money yet. Nobody's got the set of plans and specs. Nobody. Out of all two hundred jobs, none of them have got started. So I don't know how that, what they're gonna do. They gotta get this money on doubt, cause it's, it's build back better money and they're giving everybody deadlines that's unmeasurable. But anyway, we do have a project extension on the interest rate of one point seven, five percent interest. If we can be on, have first draw on the money by November thirty-first, I don't know if we'll either get either one of those.
When is that first?
November first.
Uh?
November first.
November first, okay. I'm not looking at you. Okay, November first, first draw. We bank it, like I said, we made possibly, and it's very slim chance of even getting that project under construction. And that's the one that's got all the forgiveness money on it. So you want, I mean, it's got seventy percent forgiveness money on it. They still call the loan the same amount of loan, but then they're gonna forgive it as quick as you get the job complete. Then they write a check for the seventy percent forgiveness and I don't understand why they gotta do it that way.
Billy, you're only talking, you're talking, it says here, however, this is still pending on making all programmatic requirements, considering the project's gonna, this is a full on post, on or before the rule of the first forty-four. You're talking like three months. That's like, uh, rinsing your car with soap after you wash it.
I understand. It's three months, they're not giving anybody any timeline to get that. They're just hoping to see if they can get somebody pushing hard enough to start getting some of the money dropped.
I have a question, Billy. Could, could you, and this is just, might be far out there, but could you, um, you know you're gonna get an invoice from your architect and engineer surveyor.
That's not soon.
That can't be your first draw?
No. It's gotta be, you gotta, you gotta have a contractor laying material on the ground. It doesn't have to be under construction, cause you can give him a material draw and you pay him for stored materials. That'll be your first check. And that's gotta be done by this date. There's no way they're gonna meet these dates. I've talked to Terry Rice on it and he's, he's real good buddies with all the people over there at Natural Resource. And he said, well, they're gonna have to work with y'all. They ain't got it done, but right now they're telling every engineer state. You gonna do it or you're not gonna get the interest rate? I'm sure some jobs, some jobs, they're gonna have to fund some jobs at this one point seven, five, cause they gotta get somebody off high center. Not anybody's been able to move because everything's gone up so much. They bid some money on, uh, what was the last money that we did finish the water line on First Street on? What was that money? American Rescue money. They just bid out the last of that money and all the contractors are just now getting that job done. And a ten-inch water main went from, Chris, I think said, or Andy, Karen said it was going for like nine dollars a foot three years, or two years ago. And it went for twenty-seven bucks. Does that sound about right? Went for twenty-seven dollars a foot. So you're going from nine to twelve dollars to twenty-seven dollars a foot was a low bid. If these prices come back like this, I don't know what people are gonna do. You can't.
I'll tell you something else, uh, as a side note, too, we need to be very careful on, uh, cutting ties with any contractor that's willing to do any work for us. Because the way they're cramming this stuff down everyone's throat across the whole state.
It's in state destination.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I mean, as far as we're concerned, we're up against, you know, I guess what I'm saying is supply and demand is naturally gonna increase the bids as they start backing up. Which is only going to increase the problem and make it even worse, so. I don't know what they consider the first draw, but you said drop something on the ground and give them a dollar check. Is that qualified or you gotta?
No, you're gonna have to have, for stored materials, you're gonna have to have an invoice for stored materials for the job. I mean, it's gotta, and then they, the way they pay those jobs, if a contractor comes in, he can get one draw for stored material. After that, he gets a draw each four weeks or whatever they do. And the material he brings in on job and uses on job is paid for. The like of it's, the one that's gonna have all the sewer main on it, it's got fifty thousand feet of, uh, sewer line. They'll deliver all that to the job and they'll pay for it and then they deduct it off each paycheck. In other words, he said the cost was eight dollars a foot. He's getting thirty to put it in. The stored material was eight dollars a foot. I just throw a number out there. I'm not gonna be right. Then they deduct that off of his paid inventory and they're paying for his labor. And you got, you can't just go get a check. They've never done them this way. Any job the government's ever done, state or natural resource ever done, never been done this way. Never. And you got five hundred million they released last year. You got five hundred million that's gonna release June the first and you got another five hundred million gonna release next June the first. And they ain't got the first job under construction yet. And if Arkansas got five hundred million dollars, you divide that by every other state, divide five hundred million by population. And you do all the forty-nine other states and you multiply what that dollar amount is times their population, or that much work to build back better nationwide. It's just gonna make inflation, cause there's not enough contractors doing it and you're driving, you're crossing your PVC, your concrete, your steel. The three things those jobs are gonna do, just going through the roof.
I honestly can't afford for them to build back better too much.
That's what we're under anyway. Okay, that is those two projects. That's got you kind of up to speed on those. The Heritage Grant, David Blackman is doing, that y'all remember that depot? The bids on that are gonna come back in the latter part of this month. We're not talking, but, uh, do y'all want a special council meeting or do y'all wanna give me the approval to spend twelve thousand dollars? That's.
I make a motion, we give you the approval.
To hire the contractor that comes in and, or we can have another special meeting at the end of the month. It's, the money's only gonna be whatever the money is. It ain't gonna, it's just picking a contractor, if one comes in in the month. So on Heritage Grant, have a motion to let the mayor, if any of y'all wanna come up here, we can do it, but I don't think y'all wanna have a special meeting on the twelve thousand.
No, technically, you, you don't even have baskets under twenty thousand, so let's do it. We're on.
Well, it's a grant. I don't think you're gonna.
Are we gonna have a choice of contractors?
Yes, maybe if he's got two or three bidders, we'll pick those. I'll just pick one. If y'all wanna come up and meet with me, I can come up, one of you can come meet with me.
Yeah, I'd like to know what it is.
Is the twenty-eighth, is that the?
When did he, he talked to, uh?
Joe?
When did he say the last package up there?
Uh, it'll be running, it ran last week and will run again this week.
Okay. And a week from then, when he, what, when the week from your last deadline, what he put in the paper is the deadline?
I don't remember what he had.
He won't work with you on that.
Uh? I want you to, y'all have a meeting on, we're gonna meet on.
You always let snow on that stuff anyway, Billy.
It's not much money, but it's, it's a grant you gotta, you gotta spend the way they're doing it. So we had a motion and we had a second.
I made a motion.
You made a motion. Okay, you wanna meet on it? When the date comes?
Yeah, I think we're gonna do it.
Took y'all, why don't you wanna do it? I just wanna know what's, you wanna make calls?
What I've got is a motion on the board for him to just handle this again.
Y'all wanna meet on it? I'm tired of that too. I don't bother you. Just, y'all need to tell me what you're gonna do then.
I'd like to meet on it.
Okay. Motion dies for like a second. Y'all gonna meet on the, when is the Friday?
Well, we gotta find out what the deadline is.
On the, no, not eleven.
So we're gonna have a special week, Friday, then we're gonna have another special week?
Yeah.
Be two weeks. Two weeks.
Brittany, you're needing another day. I think I still got an email. Can you?
Alright. Well, y'all want to meet, so we don't wanna tell the people to come back. No, on the, I'm not talking about that.
On Friday, we do it.
Friday at six.
We do it by five, six, Thursday. By five, we do it. Can you do it by?
Yeah, I'm, I'm making it work. Five o'clock, all right, anyone else?
Five better for you?
Y'all are quiet over here.
I'm gonna do the best I can to be here Friday and...
Yeah, I gotta have it for them.
Five o'clock, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, twelve o'clock, it don't matter to me personally, but you...
I can, if you do it Friday, I can be here.
What time, Friday?
I'm good whenever. We gotta be next to everybody.
One o'clock in the day is finally, uh, two o'clock.
I think you got some working people.
Well, we advertise that in twelve, so that means end of our workday twelve. Which are end of our workdays, four.
So do it by... It's cause they, or do it before clock, you have to work that, but on here.
Okay, well, hold on. Hold on, I know there's three of them that's interested, is here.
Brittany, I've not seen the day off here this year.
He didn't put the day on there?
I don't see it.
My boss let me on.
I don't believe it's not here, and it's, we got the...
Whatever time we need to do, we need to get it done, guys, y'all just pick a time. Four? Okay? Okay, four o'clock. Okay, I make that a motion, so we'll have it.
Hey, one quick thing, is the ones that are interested, I are, it's like I'm missing anyone else.
The three of them are here. The, these cops. I've got those three, those three are here. I had another one that was interested, but he has looked on, due to the controversy of all the city politics.
What's that, y'all gonna meet then? What's that you're gonna do?
Uh, Friday at four o'clock.
At twelve?
At twelve.
For the Heritage Grant?
No.
No, this is...
This is to get a recorder, try to get a recorder treasurer in council.
Okay, I thought you were gonna make, uh, better time for the Heritage.
I'll make y'all do it, but, or I'll get, I'll get Randy, I'll call Randy and tell her to go up here. Uh, well, well Johnny, Johnny can get it, if he can't, I'll call Randy, and she'll send somebody else to county office if that I can do. Or I'll call, huh? Who? I don't know what his, he probably can't anymore, uh, Jerry?
Uh, well, he's still, he's still, he's still sitting on the bench all of the day, so...
He may be, if we get Johnny, we'll go Johnny first.
Billy and Anthony, the bank is square as anybody, and he may be able to...
I think he squared the council, but I don't remember.
I don't know, all I know is...
I'm not that for sure, I don't know.
You're a good lawyer, you've been swearing to us for years.
All right, y'all put that on the motion, you just, you have to, you have to... Second?
Yes.
Go call.
Okay, you got one?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
That was my Jerry.
I make a motion, you turn.
Second? Go call.
Yes.
Oh, one thing, boy, I'll leave, I'm sorry, I got one more thing. We need to introduce some new people that owns Glenwood, I don't want y'all here. Y'all introduce y'all self, I'm sorry, that's, me not being very friendly, I'm sorry about that.
I'm Dwayne Holloway, this is my wife, Gail. We own the Montgomery County news since twenty nineteen, and we moved to Glenwood almost a year ago, and it didn't make sense to not own the hometown paper. So, we're gonna, we're gonna be running both of them, so...
What have you got, the circulation up to in another?
Malata, it's, we're printing eight hundred a week up there.
I was telling them I'm going with her.
Right, right now, I'll tell you, right now, our circulation is two hundred fourteen a month.
Red wants to say something too, four ten, though.
I want everybody here to understand that's nothing to get involved. They just buried a guy down here in the borough, sent it to him, it was mauled to death by pit bull. My grandson was mauled by a pit bull. He was thankfully not injured, but the city council needs to do something about these things and make them license them, possibly have an insurance liability on them, because they are dangerous animals. This, this guy was a forty one year old, forty one year old in Arkenham, yeah, he used to live here. But he had one big pit bull.
Yeah, it was his own dog.
Yeah, his own dog.
Yeah, it was his own dog.
Yeah.